Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael O'Reilly, chairman of the Town Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to the regular meeting of April 17th, 2025 of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Please stand and join me in the flag.
The allegiance to the United States of America is to the republic which stands under individual liberty.
You're right. Call the roll, starting on my right.
I'm Alex Margulino, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Leanne Ambrosi, commissioner.
Bruno Mayne, commissioner.
Robert Westling, commissioner.
Nicole Luco, commissioner.
Catherine Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
And thank you, everyone. We're going to have general public participation at this point. If anyone is here to speak that would like to speak to the commission on a matter not on the agenda, not before the commission, this would be the time to do that. Please raise your hand if you'd like to address the commission on any issues not on the agenda, not before the commission. Yes. Right down.
Sign it.
Please. And then just state your name and address for the record.
Thomas, review the way. How many of you have been to the new Starbucks that's open yet? But I just want to express my disappointment that this commission would have allowed that ugly sign, lollipop, to get put up. I think if we go back 20 years in any new commercial building in Toronto, I don't think we've allowed any type of sign like that. Especially when it's a single business, they've all been very nice. Low-key, usually some shrubbery around them or something like that. His other stuff was done to older buildings. They did things to at least make the sign look a little bit more low-key rather than this chunky-down version of what you see on I-95. I just really think it's a shame and a big step backwards. If this commission allowed that, that's a step backwards. And I really don't think it's what residents of this town wanted going back when the change was made, when we stopped allowing that stuff. And here it is back again. So just want to point my disappointment in that. Another thing with Starbucks, though, if you've been there, I don't know how many events like pickup truck or a van or some of these larger SUVs. Try driving through there, especially if you want to go into the parking lot and then leave. But either way, try driving through without hitting a curb. Whatever turn radiuses the engineers gave you are lousy. That is 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. And in the future, I know this is built, not a whole lot you can do about it. But once people start giving you different radius things and saying the trucks can go through here and cars can fit through there, consider this with what's going on in the BART Center and the expansion that they want in the back. But you go look at the curbs. They're all dead and turned black already from all of the tires they're hitting up. People are going to be cutting up their tires. You know, and this is just either poor questions being asked or engineers way over representing what's reality. So please take that into account in the future. But if there's anything that can really be done about that sign, it should be done. We haven't allowed that. Unless someone can tell me another sign like that in this town that went up in the past 20 years, and I don't think anyone can.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here would like to speak to the commission on matters not on the agenda?
And if anybody is online, we need you to hit the raise hand command as you are not able to unmute yourself with our current Zoom protocols.
Okay, anyone online, please raise your hand. And we would see them.
They have to do the raise hand function, and I can see them in the participants list and then would notify. So at the moment, I don't see anybody utilizing the raise hand function.
Then we will, this will now end general public participation. And you have a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and move the consideration of SEP 2023-11 File 1659A from Other Business to Item Number A4.
All right, I have a motion. Just moving the executive session. Call it the executive session.
Well, we have a second. I need a second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? It's unanimous.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Leanne.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss. Do we want to say what we're attending the occasion?
Yeah. Pending litigation. All right, back in. I think we have to vote on this. Okay. We don't have to vote on this. All right, so we will be going hereby going into executive session, which means we'll need to clear the room just for a few minutes. This is on another matter on the end of the agenda, and then we'll have you back in. So for this executive session, I'm going to invite Kathleen Gallagher. I'm going to invite attorney Frank Lito. Anyone else you'd like to invite?
No, but just to let the people online know that I will be moving you to the waiting room.
Chairman O'Reilly, I would just recommend that you do vote to go into executive session for the reasons stated, so that is on the record.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Go into executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Going into executive session with a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
So attorney Lito, do I need to stop the recording?
Yeah, stop the recording, and then if there's anybody that's still participating online, you would just unfortunately have to kick them out. And then you did give them a proviso that if they sign back in, usually what they'll do is they'll sign back in immediately, and then you can just keep them in the waiting room until we're done with the executive session.
I just put them into the waiting room now.
You can do that, perfect.
So I can see them all, and then I can just admit them back in.
Perfect, excellent.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to stop the recording.
Okay, welcome back to the Town Monroe Planning Regular Meeting of the Town Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, April 17th, 2025. It is 7:20 PM. We are going to go into public hearings. The first public hearing will be SEP 2023-11 File Number 1659A. Do you want, Frank, you want to go over what you have to go over on public hearing?
Sure. That sounds good. What I would do is I would just suggest potentially having the motion made, and then in the discussion portion, I'll present it.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I hereby move as follows that the commission approve the letter of understanding settlement agreement by and between the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission and Quarry Ridge Associates LLC related to pending legal action entitled Quarry Ridge Associates LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Monroe, bearing docket number FBT-CV246136151S, and that Michael O'Reilly, as chairman of the commission, is authorized to execute the agreement and any other documents which may be necessary to effectuate its intent as presented to and reviewed by the commission as part of a public meeting pursuant to practice book 147A, and that Town Attorney Francis Lito is authorized to make minor adjustments to the agreement as may be required to effectuate its intent and to conform to any procedural requirements for approval by the Superior Court. And the Town Attorney Francis Lito is authorized to secure approval of the settlement by the Superior Court pursuant to CGS 8-8N, and that notice of this decision shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the Town of Monroe.
I have a motion by Condon. Oh, Condon, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Mayne and discussion. Yes, sir.
Sure, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So ladies and gentlemen of the commission, you have before you a letter of understanding, which is essentially a settlement agreement as referenced in the motion. As you might recall, Quarry Ridge Associates applied through the SEP 2023-11 for a certain subdivision, a certain subdivision at the property 139141201 Turkey Roost Road, and also included 33 Cobbler Shell Court. That was heard by the commission and approved by the commission on May 9th, 2024. The commission did, with respect to the approval, condition that approval. Based upon those conditions, the applicant, notwithstanding receiving the approval, did appeal the commission's decision on about May 29th, 2024. That appeal is currently pending in the Superior Court. The agreement that has been presented to you resolves that appeal in full. And as set forth in the motion, our statutory mechanism requires that in order for a land use appeal to be withdrawn or settled, it requires the presentation to, before the commission at a public hearing. And it requires the approval of the commission, and thereafter will be presented to the Superior Court for a judge to authorize and bless the approval as well. So we're here before the commission for that purpose, to satisfy the conditions precedent. The settlement agreement, which you have before you and a copy of which is in the Land Use Office, basically resolves the appeal on two key conditions. Essentially, both are administrative, in my professional opinion, administrative provisions or decisions that would have been made by Ms. Gallagher and/or Mr. DeMayo with respect to the interpretation of the commission's approval. And essentially, what we have now is an agreed-upon maintenance agreement for the community sewerage system that will be part of the HOA at the subject property. And it also clarifies that the HOA declaration will be required to be recorded, drafted and recorded prior to the construction of any dwellings on the property and not simply prior to the disturbance of the site or any permits for construction or disturbance that would not be related to the construction of actual dwellings. So those are the two provisions. Upon this commission's acceptance of that agreement, the appeal will be withdrawn with prejudice. And I'm asking that this commission, again, authorize, approve the settlement, authorize the chairman to sign it, and then further authorize, as set forth in the motion, me as the town attorney, to make sure that it's consummated and approved pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 8-8. And if there's any minor changes that are required as a result of that process, that I be authorized to make those minor changes.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll call the roll, starting on my right.
I do just want to, for the record, just make it clear that, yes, I agree with what attorney Leo had said, that the provisions as set forth in the agreement is how both myself and Town Engineer DeMayo would have administratively interpreted the wishes of the commission.
Very good. You ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right, the call of all, starting on my right.
Is this the full commission?
Yes.
Smolletto, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes. O'Reilly, yes. Mayne, yes.
Westling, yes.
Luco, yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you for considering taking this matter up first. Good luck with your meeting.
Thank you, attorney Lito.
Thank you.
Moving into our public hearing, number one, SEP 2025-01 File 1665. That's 1536 and 1564 Monroe Turnpike. This is a continuation from April the 3rd. And for the applicant.
Anybody?
For the record, Jason Edwards, Chair of the Associates and senior conservators of the 327 St. Peter Road in Easton. So we were doing it a couple of weeks ago and went through the long presentation details of everything. There was a few outstanding issues that we wanted to come back and address. So just a reminder, this site is located opposite of the former school, former site. It's vacant property, no existing buildings on it. Route 111, just opposite Old Zor. This is just subdivision map to remind everybody we've got a new road proposed and then a new lot and a new subdivision, which gives us a lot of open space. Plus, we've been developing a lot of the west side property. So one of the notes I had is mission request was to see the correspondence with DOT that we had regarding that entrance alignment. This was the email correspondence I had with them. I can just print copy this, but it essentially says that they want us to align it with the old door intersection. That's what we used as our guidance. And we got back and forth on a few other questions before we got to this point. But I can submit the full email chain to the staff. You might see it, but so highway manual indicates that this is a four-point intersection suggested. In this case, our corner between Condes and Old Zor. Based on the manual, we refer to that new road intersection opposite of Old Zor. And I agree with your assessment. Please, this is the response on the bottom. Please ensure there's intersection, sign-like distance between post-site drive and the intersection of mine and top. That's how we got to where we were with the road alignment with the correspondence. One of the other topics that came up was the drainage coming down and how it would impact this main road property here, which is Mr. Giant's house. I think it's the ninth attitude. On the left, I'm trying to outline. This is the, what our existing drainage flow looked like on the site. The purple arrows are runoff paths that the computer generates based on, you know, where the water starts. You can take a drop of water and it's a lot of that. The area that drains through that property as it exists today is roughly this rectangle, kind of whatever shape that is. This polygon, you know, that's essentially the area that drains down. And we did come up with an area roughly 93,000 square feet of area that, as it is today, through the woods, she flows down and comes through that property. With the new driveways, drainage, and road, everything here, that water is going to be intercepted about halfway down the hill and then diverted. Yeah, we did add a new diverting swell here as requested by the commission. That's the red here that would take some of the water, which is this way. This driveway is curved, so when the water comes down from the top, it's going to be picked up by the driveway, diverted to that drainage block on the road. So it leaves just the section that's down below the driveway, which would remain in its static state. And so it's going to take that drainage area down to about 49,000 square feet. So it will actually reduce the amount of water coming down in that property.
It's also something you were going to put, oh, that's new swell.
Yes, a swell, yes.
It's a swell made out of?
That's, I think, we decided as a grass swell with a it's going to put around bottom and it probably, I think, travel in detail, I'm not sure, but I will look into it. So the other, I guess, larger topic was still sidewalks. The commission had requested that we explore the optimistic sidewalk along the road turnpike. Section down here. Couple of issues that we think are important to point out. Sidewalk maintenance per the town and state, state, we talked to the state. They basically said that they defer to the town on what they want as far as the maintenance of the sidewalks, whatever the town's policy is, that's what applies to the sidewalks in front of the homes on state roads as well. So that responsibility would defer to these homeowners here on lots one and two would be responsible for maintenance and plowing and whatnot of the sidewalk out on 111 that they don't really have access, they have access to it, but they'd have to walk all the way around to get there. I think it's unlikely that they're probably going to go out there to do that. So I don't know who that falls to if they don't do it. From what I could tell, this would be the only sidewalk in front of an RF2 district along Route 111. I looked through, I didn't see any others. So this would be the first spot that's going to be required for a neighborhood. I don't think there's any others, you know, one, I didn't see them, so. Other recent projects were mentioned that had sidewalk approvals. And I know the ones that I was involved with were 1271 with the turnpike. That required internal only, we had sidewalks approved there. But that was also kind of mini, have a ownership development. It's not, in this case, we'd have sidewalks, if we were to do them internally, they'd be long sidewalks in front of each one of these houses. The houses would then be responsible for maintaining them. Or in this case, if it's along the road, then the two homeowners that have it in front of the sidewalk would be responsible for maintaining them. I guess that's the way I understand it. And then I think the, probably the larger issue even to those others is the terrain through here is, there's a drainage. This is an overlap, the aerial, the red lines on the new sidewalk here are partly deep. And there's the drainage inlet here. That's the existing DOT inlet that our water goes into. The grade, I have another photo here in a second to show you what happens with the grade there. But this drops down significantly right through here. So in order to build that sidewalk, they're going to have to reconstruct the head wall and fill the wetlands here to make that sidewalk viable. And it is going to be a filled condition all the way along here, which then is a telephone pole right there that we're going to have to go right through. And then it opens up a little bit farther down, but that area right by the roadway is going to be challenging. This is this is that red in Old Zor, right? It wasn't moved in. Okay, no, yes. No. Yes, Old Zor on our left here, yes. So this is, this is down in that piping, which you can see drops down there. This is looking to the other version of it. So we would get Old Zor on the right side. Yeah, yeah. So this is the area where we would have to fill, and this head wall would have to be raised.
And the sidewalk.
Yeah, this would be generally the sidewalk at 32.
Big ass.
Yeah, but it'd be estimated somewhere, I mean, we don't have all the wetlands flagged through there. We've got some site, probably somewhere around 2,000 to 3,000 square feet of value that would be started to put back. So we don't think it's a viable location for that sidewalk. And additionally, there was discussion of if the, you know, if the town ever wanted to connect down to Route 34 with a sidewalk, that this could be the start of that. This is what that railroad intersection looks like. Yeah, there's really not room for a sidewalk to be built underneath that railroad bridge. Not to DOT standards, they require, I think, a five-foot wide walk with a four-foot shoulder between the walks. You end up with a nine-foot wide corridor that you have to kind of build. I mean, they could allow for some sort of variance of it, but the reality is it's not an ideal spot to have a pedestrian crossing. And that's also a private railroad, it's still owned by, you know, one of the private, I don't know which company, but it's not owned by DOT, so they wouldn't be allowed to go over it. They'd have to buy it first. I think that was all that I had for comments to address. We did still, we had a comment letter from Town Attorney here. We've, it's mostly technical, it's all technical items, really. I don't think he's, we haven't gotten him a final response yet. So I think most of those issues are not, none of those issues are deal breakers. But I, I'll leave it up to the commission if they wait for him to respond or we have any other time. So that's really all, stuff on the subdivision map calculation. But we checked all that, you know, once. I certainly check, you know, teams I can check ourselves, but generally we think we're in a pretty good spot with it. I'll, any questions or?
Question or question, so start on my right. No questions?
No questions.
And sidewalks. The state, the state wants, like, commissions in the town main roads and state highways to encourage to put sidewalks. I mean, there's a law, there's statute on it, stuff like that about doing that. And so that's why on the main roads, you know, it's a safety factor.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand maybe they don't have the room there or whatever. But on the other hand, is, the state wants commissions to look at and to, for public safety, to install sidewalks on their state roads. I mean, in fact, we put sidewalks going over here to the roundabout. That's because the state built it, and the state requires sidewalks. And so 111 is a state road. And that's why I require a sidewalk to be on the main road. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the commission, I understand it's a tough site, I got that. But on the other hand, is, we have to worry about public safety. And that's what this commission is for. And so that's where I stand on it. And I read the law, and it said that they recommend that.
Yeah, in connection with this, I reserve the seat, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. You know, and that's why we went and looked at it, certainly understand that that's a recommendation. It's just, for this particular property is a significant project. I mean, we would have to, we'd have to extend the pipe that's DOT, pipe that's underneath probably, and we have to, that the wall, there's a lot of engineering that has to be done there. And then it would have to go, it would definitely have to go back to wetlands.
No, I have to watch, I understand that. What I'm saying too is what my reason behind putting sidewalks there is because the state basically wants commissions, especially on their red roads, and especially on any kind of bridges or anything like that, they want sidewalks. I mean, I've been in, I've been in the situations where I've been on public highways and done stuff and stuff like that, and almost been hit. So, and that's, that's because I want state police laws and stuff, I just told you. And a couple of times I ended up almost getting hit on a highway. So it's not like that I don't know that that can happen. It can happen, especially when it's bad weather. So that's where I'm on, where, and there is, you know, the state recommends you to, missions to look at this and do this. And so it's not like I'm just throwing that out just
No, no, and we're not saying that, just, and I, if there's an opportunity, because I know, you know, we've done it, you know, just to the, you know, fellow general, you know, a couple of months ago, and there we were able to do it. And, you know, where I think, you know, there's an opportunity, absolutely. This one, it just seems like there's a significant issue with doing it. And I don't know if it's something where there would have to be a broader look as to that area and where sidewalks could feasibly be placed. Is it maybe on one side of the road and not the other? I don't know, but there's, there's, there's a significant challenge here with this site, I think, with installing sidewalks along 111.
That's where I was at with the sidewalk.
I totally understand.
I mean, it is, it is what it is. Basically, I mean, I can see what you have there, but that's really, I mean, that's really not the commission's concern about, you know, about the way it is. I mean, that's something your concern is, is if you could do it or not, or if this commission requires it or not. But I'm just saying, my point is that basically, I mean, I do a lot of looking at statutes and stuff like that. And I knew that that was part of that, because, I mean, that's why the sidewalks ended up out here at the, on the roundabout. Because the state required it. It's not like they didn't just
No, I understand.
You know what I mean, so, all right, that's where I'm at with it. Okay, do you have any other questions?
Question mark. So I, I see both sides, right, about sidewalks. I, I agree with Leon, I think they should be in. But I also do understand that this is, this is pretty rough terrain. And you definitely got to go back to wetlands, right? Because you're going to disturb wetlands. The idea of the telephone pole, that, you know, you go around all over, there's sidewalks on telephone poles everywhere. So that's not a, that's not an issue whatsoever. But I do understand that this is a very rough, it's very rough for the location for the sidewalks. Say something changed with the terrain. Say, I don't know, something happened, something changed. Is there something we could put in that they would put sidewalks? Is there something we could put in that they would put sidewalks in at a later date, or is that not something that would be?
I'm just trying to think, I mean, you know, because the stadium, I had seen here, in times, there's been applications where where properties are really tight to a road, and sometimes the properties offer like an easement to be able to expand for something like sidewalks and land. But you don't have that issue here. With regards to state-owned area, with regards to future development, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I'd, I'd have to think about those.
Did you know, like, the state comes in every once in a while, and they start doing this, start doing that, like, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know myself.
Yeah, you don't know, like, you know, the part, like, DOT would have to probably, they would have to sign off on any type of construction that we would. So this would not only have to go back to the wetlands commission, we'd probably, we'd have to present something to DOT, I'm sure, showing them what we're doing with their pipe and the head wall and everything there, so I mean.
Yes, and then we'll look at it until we have approval from here, so, we talked to them, and they basically said we don't want to look at it until you have approved plans. They would give us, it's just, sorry, Jason, they basically said they, they weighed in on the responsibilities of maintenance and everything, but they didn't want to look at just conceptual plans, they wanted something that we could try harder, but, you know, we got some.
Yeah, I get it, it's just, it is a very rough, it's very rough, and it also, it also disturbs wetlands, which is something we.
There's also a huge problem, because I've talked, we've been talking about this, there's a huge problem of what do you do during the construction with that waterway? Where, you know, there's, in other locations, we're able, I think we're diverted, right, where we're able to divert it, but here, where would
You're not diverting it anyway.
In, during the construction, it makes it, it makes it extremely challenging.
Okay. And I still would like you guys to answer the engineers' questions before we, we go forward on any kind of approval. I would feel more, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I would totally feel more comfortable if I could see it with my own eyes before. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I don't really see a viable workaround as far as the sidewalks are concerned, a common ground, I mean, the project's either gonna require them or it isn't. I think that the creation of these sidewalks would cause more harm than, than good. And Commissioner Ambrosi presented me some information from the state, which I thank him for, I'm reading through the recommendations put forth. And I don't see anything concrete in this language that requires these sidewalks for this project. I do see where it discusses sidewalks to municipalities, which would put an answer to why the roundabout was required for sidewalks. The rest of the information that's in front of me here does not pertain in many ways to this project, and the topography challenges certainly restrict our ability to put those in with any type of viability as far as I'm concerned. So I don't think, I believe that in this particular situation with the dead end road, the, the residents will have the dead end road to walk on, they don't have accessibility, they're not gonna be able to get past the railroad tracks, and if something does get built in between there, it's, it's not gonna be able to be accessed via sidewalks as far as I'm concerned. That's it.
Okay. You have another question?
Yeah, so.
You're looking for a waiver for something on that road too, right? This commission? Yeah, what kind of waivers are those?
One is the width, we asked for, standard thirty two, we asked for, thirty or thirty two, we asked for twenty eight, town engineer supported that one. Uh, we asked for plastic pipe instead of concrete pipe, he wants concrete pipe within the town right away, from what I understand. Uh, it's going outside of that, the problem was that we're okay with concrete pipe, we'll change the plans. And then there was, where the, the Culver Crossing is, we had asked him to have a three foot wide shoulder there instead of four, he wants four, so we'll have to address that.
The waivers for the front of the road, right, along the property going down? One eleven, where is it waived for that you're talking about?
No, no, these are all for the new road.
In the new road, so, okay.
We've, we're working that out, we've got solutions though.
He's fine with the, with the, how many feet you said?
Probably over twenty eight feet, which is what they use.
He's fine with that amount?
His letter says so.
Yes, I've talked to him personally, yes.
All right, that's all right.
Any other questions on the commissioners, if not, we'll go to the public?
Can I actually, can I?
Comment, go ahead.
Do a couple of things, I just wanna read the exhibits into the record, which is.
I have a question, actually, does the documentation that's been presented to one of the commissioners by another commissioner need to be added as an exhibit?
I'm not used to commissioners testifying, so, um, I'm not sure we can, we can, we can. I think we should, because.
I mean, it's being pseudo-shared to less.
I agree, so, yes, we can have that it.
What was the question?
It's gonna stamp that into the record as an exhibit.
Exhibit seventeen is just a copy of the inland wetland subdivision positive referral from October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Exhibit seventeen is my updated comment letter revised April ninth, twenty twenty five. Exhibit nineteen is correspondence between myself and resident Kelly Hengus Colano of Hills Road, and let me see, I can't see the address at the bottom of this, but she is Monroe resident. Exhibit twenty is a letter from the resident at sixty six Downs Road. Exhibit twenty two is a letter from Fire Marshal William Daven for the town of Monroe. Um, he's just giving you some updated information regarding the fire pond and the fire pond maintenance, how they are in town. Um, he did take a, you know, secondary look at the fire pond, we also did, uh, quick calculations for the gallons to make sure that that was sufficient, you know, for him. And he took no exception to the information that was provided. Uh, the town engineer memo is exhibit twenty three dated April seventeen, twenty twenty five. Exhibit twenty four is a letter from a resident at I don't have an address. Uh, but Ms. Johnson, who is a resident of the town of Monroe, exhibit number twenty five is from a resident at Five Sunrise Terrace, and I missed exhibit twenty one, which is from a resident, Ms. Jelly, who is twenty two ninety Cottage Street. So we did get a bunch of these today and yesterday and this afternoon, so you guys have not seen it, it was not in your packets. Um, but that's another reason to continue the public hearing to the next meeting, is so that you all have the opportunity to make sure that you have a chance to read all of the residents' comments. Um, just a couple of my comments, yes, I appreciate, I want the commission to really understand what they'll be voting for, I would also like the opportunity to draft an approval if at the end of this public hearing, that's the direction you would want to go. Um, there are the three waivers that would be included in the resolution. When we talk about potential conditions of approval or outstanding issues. Uh, there's just a couple related to monuments from the town engineer, as-built depicting conformance, pretty typical stuff, but we do have a list from the town engineer of items he would want. Easements, we're still having a couple conversations about the easements, so there's a conservation easement, the draft language was approved by the inland wetland commission. And we did request, and we got a draft of an updated version of that to make sure that the fire pond could be constructed as part of that, so that the conservation easement wasn't restricting to the construction of that. Um, and then we just have a couple more conversations about who's responsible for the stormwater management practices and making sure that we have access to the stormwater management practices. Um, if need be, we're not requiring draft language, we just wanna be really clear. Um, and I can maybe put some language in the resolution to make sure we understand who's responsible for that, the town is not gonna be responsible for the stormwater basins, that is gonna be the responsibility of the individual residents who is on that. Uh, we currently have no final bond amount, I do believe that the town engineer had requested some additional information, so that's another reason why we can't vote on it tonight. Is because we need to make sure we have a final bond amount to be included in the motion and the resolution. And I also need a copy of the conventional subdivision, for the record, I didn't receive a copy of that, as well as some of the information you presented tonight, and I do believe that pipe size analysis is required by the town, you did get that too, so that might have been updated since I, we last talked. And that's the end of my comments.
I just had one thing, Chris, so, um, on those exhibits, the fire marshal, because I think Commissioner Mayne asked this question, there was a question of how often is that inspected? And I think the fire marshal indicated they do that annually.
Yeah, he, he was good with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Loufo, I don't think you had a chance to ask any questions.
No, I was lucky, actually, thank you.
Good, okay. All right, then we'll go to the public at this point. If public has any comments, or would like to speak to the commissioners about, just raise your hand, we'll ask you to come forward, once you come forward, fill out the, your name and address, and then give us your name and address. Please address the commission, not the applicant or the applicant's professionals, okay? And we'll start with Chris.
Name and address. Hi, uh, my, yeah, thank you, uh, my name is Samantha Thierant, I, I'm pretty loud, I don't know, I reside at Five Sunrise Terrace, here in Monroe. I'm coming forward tonight as someone who loves this town and is strongly against this proposed cluster subdivision at fifteen sixty four and fifteen thirty six Monroe Turnpike. In two thousand sixteen, my husband and I bought our first home priced out of Stanford and Nora, where we had lived for over a decade. We stumbled upon, stumbled upon the Stevenson section of town. Brian is my husband, and myself found a property at Five Sunrise that met our needs. One question I specifically asked our realtor, naively believing I could trust what she said, is quote, what about the land behind our home? This land is one sunrise terrace, and according to GIS, is a five acre parcel of property belonging to someone we have since met who resides in Shul. The realtor informed us, oh no, that's wetlands back there, you can't build on wetlands. Through this experience, I have come to the sad reality that you can, in fact, build on wetlands if you, if you provide mitigation and meet the town's requirements for open space. You can imagine my shock and concern when I saw the large sign go up on Monroe Turnpike some time ago, offering up the, this acreage of property. My heart literally sank, and I know this is not about emotion, but I mentioned that anyway. Um, I had seen this before with my grandparents, and that was specifically why I asked the realtor about the land behind our home prior to purchasing it. One sunrise terrace abuts the property we're discussing. The neighborhood rallied, and because so many of us requested an independent scientist weigh in on the site, the IWC hired Dr. Clemens, he brought with him great knowledge, experience, and advice to the IWC regarding the planning on the property. Much of this centered around the idea that DOT would not allow the road on the site from anywhere other than a cross from Old Zor Road. Uh, Dr. Clemens is quoted as saying, this brings me to the final and probably most controversial remaining issue. I understand that the representation has been made that a stream crossing is needed because DOT won't allow access to the adjacent state highway, eliminating the need for a crossing to the applicant's property. The record could be improved if either there was a letter stating that from DOT, or a letter from the applicant or the town engineer stating that fact. He, this is him saying, possibly such a letter exists, and I have overlooked it. I filed, under, as my legal right, filed a Freedom of Information Act with the state. Um, I received a notice from attorney Alice Sexton. Um, and, forgive me, I left my notes that she, she sent, so I have to read from my phone. Uh, she is the principal attorney. Um, I wrote a letter asking, um, to my knowledge, the only correspondence I have seen between this party and the state is the one sentence email that was brought up at the very beginning of this meeting. She responded, quote, and this is in your packets, the department does not have any jurisdiction over the wetlands area, but we would have to issue a permit for the creation of a new driveway intersecting with the state road. I'm treating your request as one for any plans for Sun Valley Glen, for any notes from a meeting related to the addresses fifteen sixty four and fifteen thirty six Monroe Turnpike. Uh, I then was copied in from a Ralph P. DeSanti, who's listed as the transportation maintenance planner to Connecticut Department of Transportation. Good afternoon, also in your packets, sorry. District three, nothing for the two addresses fifteen sixty four and fifteen thirty six, and did not meet with anyone. So, my question is, has DOT come out to the site? Will they come out to the site? Um, because so much of what was discussed at inland wetlands and, um, and, and at the meeting last week, which I unfortunately didn't attend, has all centered around the placement of the driveway of the road. Um, so I bring up Downs Road, I know, I know sightlines were submitted from the engineer for the applicant, but I'm asking about the state. Has the state looked at the sightlines? I don't know if that's a requirement, but I'm not gonna read everything I have about, about the DOT and how that came into the discussions within the wetlands. So my question is, was the DOT, uh, spoken to about man, accessing from Manor Drive? Were they spoken to about accessing from Downs Road, or was it just simply put to them about the frontage on one eleven Monroe Turnpike? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question. I'm not gonna go on and on and on about the wildlife and everything, because honestly, the reception we got from inland wetlands was, you know, nobody really wants to hear about, hear about that. And, and that's a, not a quote, but, um. Also, there's the issue of vernal pools, I know it's come up over and over and over again, I know the, the, the applicant's experts have said there are no vernal pools. Dr. Clemens, the, uh, the independent scientist, never said in any evidence I can see that there is definitely, definitively no vernal, no site where vernal pools could be, in fact, in his, um, in his evidence, he gave a site where on the property there could be vernal pools. The only reason that the neighbors are harping on about, um, vernal pools is because uh, in previous years, uh, whether legal or not, um, people have accessed the property and seen them. So whether they're walking their dogs, they don't realize the property belongs to someone, I don't know, it wasn't being, I, I'm not saying that it was right, but I'm saying vernal pools were observed. So those are my main concerns and questions. Um, I will also just wanna put into the record that I am concerned about my well, I mean, my well is, I don't know how, how deep it is, but it's literally under my driveway. And we have a very small plot of land, and I'm concerned about water being taken from, basically taken from us in our neighborhoods in order to make way for these giant homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak to the commission? Please raise your hand. Come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paula Jelly, I reside at two ninety Cottage Street, and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike surrounds me on three sides. Please ask the fire marshal to correct his letter dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, that is today. To change the word unsure to ensure, that's U N S U R E, that means. That means, you know what it means, to ensure. E N S U R E. And these words have very different meanings, and the context seems to be ensure. To secure or guaranteed. To make sure or certain. To make secure or safe, as from Paul. The current third paragraph reads, "All fire palms and sisters are built to specifications that are supplied by this office to ensure all the fire department connections are the same throughout the town." So that should be changed to ensure. "It will add to my list and photographs of wildlife that are seen, not including, not including birds, or bobcats, or eastern box turtles, and listed on heat levels with an animal of special concern. And Dr. Clemens noted, 'Bobcats suitable for the eastern box turtles.' Years ago, I saw an eastern box turtle near the base of my Norway maple tree in my front lawn. In all instances of city bobcats, including their footprints in the snow, and being, and been traveling, they were traveling from north to south. An indication that isn't, this is an animal corridor to get to the wetlands on these properties, most of which are on fifteen thirty-six Monroe Turnpike." To further my comments regarding the IWC sidewalk on June eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four, the applicant asserted that the open space, twelve point five acres, would not be disturbed, and that accessing this area would be very limited to, into steep graves leading to wetlands. When I visited the property of Ryan and Aaron's buttes at thirty-five Manor Drive last year, during the height of the growing season, Ryan pointed out to me the trailhead at the east side of the cul-de-sac on Manor Drive. I find it hard to believe that access to this area would be very limited since so many people have said they have walked through these woods for years, including walking their dogs. The plan still showed termination of the footing drain from house number four just above my property and not the open space further north. It needs, still needs to reflect it on the plans, please. In reference to the water runoff in a grassy burn, can that be explained to me further? Because in last meeting, two weeks ago, um, I think it was uh, the chairman who had talked about a um, a French drain, which is far more involved than just a grassy burn. A grassy burn is, is catching surface water versus a French drain is catching water several feet down. My French drain goes down in the center of my property, maybe flooding out feet. So it's catching a lot of deep water that's coming off of that hill. So what would prevent a homeowner that buys house number four from removing that burn? And no longer protecting surface runoff? It is just protecting this path of the water. On page twenty-two of the subdivision of law regulations, point number five, recognition of the current and natural value of new constructed stone wall. On page eight of the same regulation D, a subdivision map shall be submitted and show the following. Number five, existing stone wall. On page twenty-five, as the same regulations also protect stone walls. I wanted to show you some additional photos of the stone walls that are not reflected on the plan that the applicant had submitted. This is the very west north uh, corner of my property, and this wall continues further on Cottage Street. I don't know how far it goes, but I know when you drive up my home, you can still see that wall. In fact, there's a big gap in the wall that they look like they took down to get heavy equipment in there to do the purpose. This is um, the very north corner of my property with a surveyor's stake, and you can see the stone wall there. And that stone wall continues into the open space that is to the northeast of my property. But I would assume that they wouldn't disturb that at all since it's been left at this. Please confirm. Can the applicant map out where all the stone walls are on the properties? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here that would like to speak to the commission? Come right up.
South Saltisian, two thirty-seven Cottage Street. I know we keep talking about wetlands, and I understand there's not wetlands permission, so I'm going to try and really avoid that as much as possible. However, I've got a couple of questions, and I missed the last couple of meetings. Since the last one I messed up with wetlands, they so much a picture of the swale above Ms. Jelly's property to, toward the water, it looks like north, more towards her thirty-four. There is a house there, and Cottage Street is there. I want to know if, especially if we have been at like we have last year, has there been anything to say, okay, fine, if we're looking at it coming down in this way, one, it's not going to negatively impact Ms. Jelly's neighbor, who's been unable to attend my meetings, or just doesn't. And is this going to potentially dump out on Cottage Street by Downs Road? That's a concern for me, because I kind of lost both ends of my street and that foot. So, I'm concerned about that. Uh, still questioning why it was not viable to do expand versus everybody talking about disrupting the wetlands. But sidewalks, I'm, I'm very apprehensive to touch. We have eight homes to propose to go in. It's unlikely. There's not going to be children. We have honey, honey. We have the liquor store. We have a lot of people. There's three offhand that come down Downs and Cottage, cut through dirt paths across the railroad tracks, and one of y'all is out in your head. They're right behind Dunkin' Donuts. My concern, and I've seen a couple of kids in the past, my concern is we're going to put eight houses here, and no matter how viable or not those sidewalks are, the state wants it on these roads that are so busy for a reason. If we end up with children deciding before they're going to come home, summer vacation, whatever, somebody's going to get clipped. We don't have homes, as you saw in that picture. We don't have properties where you walk on some of these laws. And if you don't, you have no choice but to walk on thirty-four if you're going to those businesses. I'm really concerned, because either they're going to go on there, or they're going to go across the backup property more likely than not, come down Downs Road, which is a really rough street, which is why they couldn't put the street there. So, I am concerned. I don't want to go over wetlands. I don't. Uh, but I'm very concerned about not abiding by those state recommendations, especially when we're putting in homes on such a busy road. Besides, people walk the road, and people walk on the street all the time. So, and that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else here tonight that would like to address the commission? Is there anyone online that would like to address the commission on this application? Please raise your hand. Brian T. Can we um, unmute?
Yes. So, I have to ask him to unmute, and then he has to unmute himself.
Okay, Brian, now go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. You can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes. Uh, my name's Brian Theoret. Uh, I'm at Five Sunrise Terrace. Um. Some concerns here. Uh, right across the street uh, from this proposed development is a very large section uh, by the lumberyard. We're basically all that earth just like washed away entirely from all that recent rain and flooding. Um, it just like disappeared. Uh, I'm concerned if all of these trees are taken down on this proposed uh, property, the same thing's going to happen all over uh, in those woods around Paula Jelly's house, over the the section that goes underneath one eleven. Um, the uh, the part of the, uh, the wetlands that are being covered by uh, the entrance. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, if uh, in the next flood, it, it takes out the entrance of this development if, if this unfortunately goes through. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if it took out the entire section of one eleven. Um, you know, if, if this development goes through. That erosion by the lumberyards really close to where the proposed development is. And I'm just very concerned about that. More development means more erosion of the land, more flooding, more headaches for the people that live here, more headaches for the town to fix when the road washes away. Um, the rain decimated that entire area of the lumberyard already, and it's going to happen again. Um, I'm concerned for the, the neighbors that, that live directly below all of this um, proposed development for the same reasons. Uh, another thing, um, somebody had mentioned uh, rock walls and um, I'm just wondering, are there any, are any of these walls protected under any stone wall preservation or historic preservation laws? Um, I'm not sure if that's something that's been looked into, uh, but if it is, uh, you know, that's something I'm concerned with as well. Um. Another thing I'm really concerned with is uh, our wells. Um, some of us already have wells that, you know, take a while to refill when, you know, the water is used and eight new homes in this area, uh, it's going to put a strain on everyone's well, and uh, you know, that's a huge concern of mine. Um, so I, I just want to put it on record that uh, I oppose this project. Um, I opposed the project when it was with IWC, and I oppose it here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian T. Anyone else online that would like to comment on this application? Uh, seeing none, anyone else in person that would like to comment on this application? If not, then we will move out of public participation. Any commissioners have any um, questions for the night? If not, then we'll go back to the applicant. Would like to um, address any of these concerns that were raised?
Jason Edwards for the record, uh, just regarding the, the couple of comments on the footing drains that we had talked about making, uh, those changes have been made, they just haven't been submitted to the town and county yet, since the plans haven't been seen, but they are being made. So those will be part of the uh, final plans, um, and um, as far as the increase, the runoff coming down the hill, the design, as required by, by state local statutes, we have to have zero increase in runoff from the site. So, any of the drainage that we're diverting around to try to help protect that, the one house, we're not, there's no increase in runoff anywhere coming down the hill anyway. It's all the same amount of water that's coming down now. We're just trying to keep it away from our house and help her out by doing that. Um, in the sense of what the regulations require, there's no real responsibility of us to do that. Um, the water's coming down the hill through the woods now. It can continue to do that, but we're offering to put that swale in to, to help, you know, uh, help her with her water problem there. And I think it could be something that um, is noted on the plans as a requirement in the town area, that enforce that or someone could enforce it when you go for building permit, to make sure that that gets put on the, the building permit application plan, uh, when they go for.
I think our concern also is, what, what is the likelihood of the swell getting removed in the future?
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I would, and if anyone would go and try to remove that, I don't know what the reason would be to remove that where it is. It's on the middle of the slope. There would be, nothing else really could be built there, um, except for maybe landscaping, but uh, there's not really any mechanism that, that we would have to, to make sure that they kept it there, um, other than.
Well, I would think always if it was part of the plans, then it's part of the approved plans would be a violation.
Yeah.
So then, so then, so then enforcement officer.
Yeah, so there'd be some teeth to the argument.
Yeah, it's the, yeah, the approval will get recorded and referenced the plans, and it'll be on the plans.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, about how long would this project take to complete?
Chairman, members of the commission, Mike Chisnowsky, land plan developer. About the long roads in this town, many, many subdivisions, including North Brick, we move along pretty quick. And uh, right, the, the most important thing is to uh, have the time during the uh, season to establish the uh, grasses and, you know, different uh, um, plants to, to, to adapt and which would cause less erosion. And if you go out into the winter time, you know, and you're working on this, rain is going to happen, there's more erosion. But we have all the controls on that with silt fencing and which is backing up silt fencing, the temporary detention basins. But I expect to get this road done within ninety days.
Wow, ninety days. Is it, my concern was
Weather permitting.
During construction, if we did have a really bad rainstorm and all, everything wasn't in place.
Everything is, on the plans, we have silt fencing, we have detention basins, we have temporary detention basins when we're building roads. This is a flat road too, okay? So, I mean, when some of the roads are built in this town, uh, Blaken Meadows, Hattertown Woods, um, Trailside Drive, that was a tough piece of property, because when it rained, the soils were like clayish and it would just flood, you know? So what we have on hillsides like that, we have, we crown our subgrades so the water goes down to gutter line, doesn't go down the center of the road, which keeps the center of the road dry, so construction vehicles won't be tracking mud everywhere. On the front, in these gutter lines, we have uh, little bases that catch, we have a runoff into a, a small pocket on both sides of the road, several of them going down the road, and the water would go in there. There's silt fencing, there's stone, uh, three quarters, there's a quarter of stone, uh, backing that up, so any water that goes through the silt fence, filters out through the stone, and it keeps going. So, that's how we protect the road and the erosion from that thing.
Thank you.
So, that's uh, you know, I'm saying ninety days, you know, weather permitting. We've got to have a nice dry season to, you know? I mean, if, if it's uh, more than that, you know, it's, it's not going to be more than four, four or five months. I want to get this thing built before fall hits. Get grasses growing, everything's stable, and uh, that's why we're looking for an approval if this is going to get. That helps.
Are there stone walls on the property?
There, it is. There's one that we took a picture of, the long route, one eleven. Um, that's one that's still there. It's never going to be touched. Okay, and there was a dilapidated wall. There was an old farm um, road that went through, uh, from, it came in a little bit above, well, across Old Zor, I think it was, wasn't it? We've had it on the, on the two inland wetlands areas, then we showed that, we showed pictures of that. Um, and there was a root cellar up there in the, in the middle of the property. Um, but as for any established stone walls or, you know, really nice stone walls that you would see around town, no. I, I could see some bouldering there, but definitely no decent stone.
Okay, so um, we're going to leave the hearing open, it sounds like, until.
It wasn't fair. It wasn't fair. Uh, May first.
It wasn't fair, it wasn't fair. Uh, May first.
Right, thank you.
Do I have any direction by the commission draft anything for the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Draft an approval with your.
Yes.
Changes et cetera, et cetera, and the changes to the fire marshal's typo.
It was a typo, she's.
That in there also.
Okay.
You going to present the municipal building change of use?
Yes.
Next on the agenda on this site development plan is municipal building change of use, seven oh seven dash seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike.
In accordance with CGS ATAC seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April seventeenth, seven PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting. And in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. Municipal building change of use, seven oh seven and seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike. Notice of application for a change of use from a religious education building to a town of Monroe non-school administrative facility. Including office and community center located at the former Saint Jude's School. Uh, seven oh seven, seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike, town of Monroe, owner applicant. Notice was published in the Connecticut notice twice, once on April fourth and again on April eleventh.
So this commission, so Captain Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator for the town of Monroe. So this commission is aware that the town of Monroe um intended and has purchased. The land and the previous Saint Jude's School at what was seven oh seven Monroe Turnpike and is currently now. Um, seven, on the parcel of seven thirty-three Monroe Turnpike. In order for us to purchase the land, we needed to have a legal mechanism and to be able to own the land. And so what we did is we did a lot line adjustment to take that portion of the lot and combined it with the library parcel. So at the moment, you'll see that the parcel address is seven thirty-three Monroe Turnpike. Um, the building address is seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike. Um, that's because at the moment it is connected to the public library parcel. That gave us the legal mechanism so that we could purchase the land. So at the moment, the town has purchased the land. In May of twenty twenty-three, town council had voted to exempt the town. From its subdivision and zoning regulations. However, during the actual meeting, they added one caveat to the resolution, which said. And I wanna read it directly from. Unless in conformity with the regulations, no permit shall be issued for any development, construction, reconstruction, alteration, relocation, demolition, extension or enlargement. Or change in use of any municipal property without the prior approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing, which is where we are tonight. Um, the request for tonight is we're requesting the change of use. Um, if they, we had no exemption, a change of use to a community center or town of Monroe non-school. Um, administrative facility would require a special exception permit. My personal opinion is a special exception permit doesn't mean that the use fully conforms, but rather potentially conforms. And for that reason, I thought it was appropriate to come in front of this commission, um, which was a condition of, of the exemption. The other item that does not completely conform um is the way that we would calculate the parking. Um, so at this time, the request to this commission is there's no site disturbance or site improvements, um, including anything related to the parking. There is minor interior work that is being convert, being performed to convert some of the existing classrooms into office spaces. Um, IT is intended to go over there, right now they're in a really cramped space at one of the elementary schools. And then parks and recreation will be over there since they'll be the ones that will be running um the classes. Um, and other events out of the community center. At the moment, those are the only two office, um, town offices that are being utilized. So they are doing some uh minor improvements to those. Uh. The parking that is currently um at the site is, we'll be utilizing the parking lot that's currently directly in front of the building. There is a gravel spot that's further uphill closer to the road that I know that I think parking has happened there in the past for events for the church and whatnot. That's gonna be the future location of the septic system. So we don't want to utilize that for parking moving forward because it runs the risk of compacting the soil. Which we are going to need in order to have a successful septic system in the future. Um, right now, based on the requirements of the square footage for the community center and for the offices, we would need a hundred and sixty-four spaces. The site contains at the moment a hundred and five parking spaces, including five ADA spaces, um, which is below the hundred and five. However, the calculations that we used in order to calculate, that included the basement of the building. And the basement of the building is about um twenty thousand seven hundred and one square feet. However, it's gonna be used exclusively for storage and isn't gonna be used for occupancy. So if we were to take that out of the parking calculations, the requirement would be a hundred and um two spaces, which is below what we have, which is the hundred and five. Um, additionally, there is a parking agreement that has already been executed for large events that we have a shared parking agreement with Saint Jude's. Um, that talks about our ability uh to use their parking lot and their ability to use our parking lot when either one um has large events. So the, my personal opinion is that there is um enough parking on site to handle the needs of the community center. Um, and the office buildings, and then we have conditions in large events um to be able to use um the Saint Jude's parking lot as well. Uh, with the appropriate communication as we have outlined. Um. The community center is a beneficial use. Um, we're able to sustainably use an existing re- resource. Enhance the municipal infrastructure, we're promoting community well-being. And it's aligned with Monroe's long-term vision for sustainable growth and community engagement. Um, so the town is respectively requesting um that the commission do vote to approve the change of use. And with the understanding that the uh parking requirements um per a straight calculation of the regulations is slightly under. Um, however, we believe that there is an appropriate amount of parking um for the use and the needs that we are providing.
Thank you. Any questions? I would thought am I right with questions from commissioners?
I'm good. No questions.
No question. Any questions, Tom? No questions from the commissioners, this is not a public.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. Are there any questions from anyone in uh attendance here tonight? Are there any questions from anyone online tonight? Please raise your hand, hit the raise my hand button, you'll be recognized. I see no questions. Okay, back to you, Captain.
Uh, we have uh no more um comments, but we do require a vote for this.
You wanna close the hearing?
Yeah, all right, we'll close the hearing. Thank you.
No, we, no, what do you want?
Well, we'll deliberate in now, so if there's no questions, let's, let's deliberations, all right, then we'll.
I'll make a motion. All right, to approve uh the municipal building change of use from seven oh, or four seven oh seven, seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike. Second.
Motion by Condon, second Westland. Uh, hold of all, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, we are approving the change of use for the municipal building at seven oh seven dash seven oh nine Monroe Turnpike.
Thank you.
Everyone, we have a new application, which I believe we spoke about last.
So again, just keeping everybody up to date that the excavation and fill uh four sixty-four Cambridge. Um, their amendment is gonna be on for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you. We have pending meeting minutes from four, three, twenty-five. So I'll have them, have you been. Oh, yeah, I'll obtain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from four, three, twenty-five.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from four, three, two, five.
I have a motion from Miami. Second.
Man Ambrosi.
Second Fran Ambrosi.
Uh, is there any discussion?
Mm-mm.
If not, uh, hold of all, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes. Planning and zoning matters. Done that one. We have a request for an eighteen-month extension, EFP twenty twenty-three dash one, one twenty-five Gardner Road.
Yes, so the.
There's a letter in here as well.
Applicant is here tonight and um I, I know our policy is that we do not read. Um, residents' letters into the record out loud, however, I am requesting an exception for that. I'd like to read um Erin Wolin of one forty-two Garter Road. Uh, Commissioner Ambrosi has asked in the past if we've received any complaints or any updates from the neighbors, we had not. Um, however, he did submit this letter on Monday, knowing that this was on for the extension. And I would like to read his letter into the record since this will most likely get voted on tonight. To whom it may concern, I was made aware that the applicant for one twenty-five Garter is requesting an eighteen-month extension. I have attended several meetings regarding this project, written letters and filed countless complaints. Please take note at how absurd this request actually is. Not only did they work for several months prior to obtaining a permit, but they have worked weekends, holidays. And frequently start and stop operations with no regard to the permitted hours. That alone should have made up more than the eighteen extra months they are asking for. On top of their blatant disregard for the rules and regulations, the work also causes premature destruction of the road. The heavily loaded dump trucks not only make extremely deep ruts, but they never secured their truckloads. Frequently causing large rocks to fall out, causing hazards. They have recently been working close to the roadway, knocking over trees, rocks and piles of dirt, making no attempt to clean up. Now our once scenic road is just a trail of dirt and dust extending all the way to their other location on Pepper Street. The project engineer said that this project would be completed and under the allotted time. They underestimated the project length by so much that it's clear they never even, that it's clear they either don't know what they're talking about. Or they are just telling everyone what they want to hear in order to get approval. Furthermore, if the applicant actually cared to complete the project, they would have more than one or two people working at the site per day. A member from the zoning board made it clear that any violations would not be tolerated. Another member said that there would be no extensions. For the duration of this project, they have been operating lawlessly, so maybe the board would hold true to not giving an extension. Uh, thanks, Erin Wolin, one forty-two Garter Road.
Hello everyone, uh, Jason Montagno of Soli Engineering, level in May tree. Um, here on behalf of the applicant, uh, one twenty-five Garter Road LLC to request um an extension to the excavation fill permit for eighteen months. Um, I just brought some materials, if you wanted me to kind of refresh the project for the commission members, I can go through some of the plans as well. Um, other than that, I'm happy to open up for discussion and answer any questions that the members may have.
Did you, uh, did you know how much material has been removed from the site since the uh approval?
Yes, so we did a drone total flight in December.
Oh, in December.
So it's a little outdated now, since they've obviously made more progress since then, but it was approximately um maybe to remove. Forty-eight thousand or cubic yards from the site.
How much was removed?
Uh.
Yes, make that.
Then do the math, it will be um thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand was removed?
Yes.
And how long in the time period?
And that was within an eighteen months, so you extrapolated it out, then they would actually leave. You're granted the eighteen month extension.
Thirty-eight thousand was removed, how much did we remove?
Uh, it was approved for eighty-six thousand cubic yards.
So.
So another forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's right. Forty-eight thousand removed in eighteen months?
Well, since December, so you can make the assumption they've done a little bit from December to now.
Right.
Now, with some of the work that's been done in the first eighteen months, is that gonna help speed up? If this is granted, the removal of the, the rest of the material, you know, as has that been, you know, loosened up, blasted, whatever the case may be to, to help expedite the removal?
Yeah, so um, and one of the big, the northern portion of the site, and I could bring it up on the plan just to make it a little more clear. Uh, was one of the, the largest uh rock cuts, it was in this vicinity. So they've now completed most of the work up in this area. I don't think the mouse is showing, but up in the northern portion, uh, where you see the dark black hatch, all of that's been removed, they made their way down to um. Um, they made their way down towards the middle of the site and they're currently excavating the rock out there. Um, the reason is they also ran into some challenges, cause as you are uh excavating, blasting, the rock quality changes. Sometimes there's fractures, sometimes it's a higher rock quality, like a hardness to remove the rock. Um, but right now, they'll be working in the middle and then they'll kind of continue um pushing down to this southern portion of the site.
And I just wanna, you know, stay for the record that, you know, I did walk the site. Um, and I was impressed with what was, what had gone on there. It did look like there was a concerted effort to. Excavate in the manner needed to redevelop. Um, it does look like you're making good progress and that your intentions, you know, I feel there's good faith there, your intentions are, are being carried through. As opposed to mining the site, I mean, I didn't get that feeling at all.
The overall goal is to, once all the material was removed, hopefully push forward with the zone change and have a right of up of residential housing, which is a much more suited use. Then putting an industrial building in this property, through some residential neighbors, so it'll fit the whole uniformity of the area.
I also walked on the site and uh, I noticed that it was cleaned, they're staying out of the wetlands and the, we've up in the view area. Road looks like it's been repaired, I don't know if the town did that, but this. I drove it a couple of weeks ago, the road looks in pretty good condition with recent additions of stone. Now, I have a question about the berm along the road, or the, the grade. Is that all gonna be removed there for driveways?
Eventually, yeah, well, I can go to.
Will that be during this excavation and fill permit duration, or is that where in the um subdivision?
That'd be more towards the subdivision, where they would have to be able to carve out a road to go down there. And we kind of did a preliminary uh plan to show how the lots would look and how the houses would be laid out and, you know, preliminary driveway location. So we showed enough, um, enough uh length to actually grade down from the roadway and down and actually get to a lot.
Do you have four driveways that you're gonna need to put in?
Right, yeah, well, uh, at least one driveway through that northern grading um area with a lot of the contours and then they'll continue south. They'll all be approximately meters or so.
When does the, um, when does it expire?
Uh, the permit, this permit expires June fifteenth of this year.
When we were there, I did actually speak to, with the foreman who seemed to uh. Give me the impression that the reason it's slow going is because they're conforming to the restricted work hours. And that they're not rushing on site, so they're blasting, but they get huge rocks that they need to break up to get into the trucks. So it seems to be a. A slower process, however, on the same token, we're still getting multiple complaints. That they're not sticking to the assigned hours.
Right, um, I could at least be agree on the uh limiting hours because in the approval, they're only allowed to uh blast. And then um transport the film material offsite between ten and three, and then all other operations are between eight and five. For complaints, I have not, unless the town is official complaint, others received them.
I think the ones that we've talked about in the past, which is that they worked on um federal holidays. Uh, which was an issue that they're trucking outside of the hours. Um. I think just the, everything that Erin had said, the condition of the um road and things of that nature are the things we. It's mostly that the trucking outside of hours, I feel like is the, the biggest one. And that's hard, and I would staff, we will stop on our way in and we'll sit there for a little bit. Um, we've never seen it ourselves, I've been out there, the zoning enforcement officer has been out there. Um, so I'm not saying they're not doing it, I'm just saying it's hard to catch them in the act, they are doing it. Um, but we have talked to Soli Engineering several times about that, and I think a lot of it was with Chris. So some of it was before your time on the project, when there was another project manager at, at Soli, um, that was on it. Um, that he, you know, got a bunch of that, but I, I don't know if some of the. That he, you know, got a bunch of that, but I don't know if some of the complaints are less because it was winter. You know, and, you know, don't know if it's going to, you know, come back up now that the summer is is coming. I will also say I did walk the site. I agree there's no crusher on site. My understanding is that they are crushing off-site. So as it relates to like noise and stuff, it actually is a benefit that they're not crushing on site. My understanding is why they're crushing off-site is because they can only crush between ten and three. So that's not enough time for them to be able to do it. They feel like their progress would be even slower.
Question I have.
Sure.
No material is supposed to be brought onto that site, right?
To be brought on?
Yeah.
Uh, that is correct. Most of the majority of it. There's just a little myself that they're going to be moving inside, but then everything should be coming off the property.
But no material is supposed to be going onto the site.
Correctly, from the approval, that's correct.
All right, because I know that I drove by there, because that's right near my business. I drive Garter Road all the time. And I watched a truck pull in there, and I came back the other way. There was a pile there with fresh dirt. And he left there empty. How much, how often did that happen? I mean, I just saw that one day last week.
Could that have been from internal moving of dirt?
No, no. This was just, guy pulled in there, dumped it, and left.
How long was the original permit for?
Two years. Um, so you have the ability to grant another two years at this time. They're only asking for eighteen months, but.
Is there something going on before that two years at that site?
I mean, that site has a long history. They were illegally operating and and I think as an illegal quarry, it was one of the illegal quarries in town. So I do believe this was part of trying to rectify some of what was there, which is why the commission, and again, this was before my time, but um.
Seems like a.
Commission was willing to do it in hopes of getting to a residential development eventually.
Which is, it just seems like a cycle of extensions and I don't know if there's a, I'm not fully convinced there's a true intention to build something here.
Was there a new owner? Or has this been the same owner?
That I don't actually know. Yeah, I don't know if there's a transfer of ownership. I will say that the applicant has come to us and has come to subcommittee and actually has asked for a zone change and to do the zone change from industrial to residential now. I think this subcommittee was not completely comfortable with that. That's eventually what they want to have happen, but they want to make sure, you know, to your point, you know, that they're concerned that it's potentially a a cycle of extensions and things of that nature, so until the site is in better place, I'm not willing to grant that at this time, but they did come in asking for that, so when you're asking, I'm just pressure testing the idea of like, you know, is there a goodwill effort to finally get to developing this as a subdivision? They were actually trying to come in for a zone change.
But even when we first approved this, we asked them that would this project be done in two years? Would the material be removed in two years? And they guaranteed that they would have this material removed in two years. Now we're here asking for another eighteen months.
Yeah.
I know, but their hours, that's, those are really limited hours to work.
But according to the neighbors, they're not really adhering to those hours.
And my question is, what benefit to Monroe is it to not grant the extension? I understand it would stop the work, but or do we want to leave this the way it is right now, or do we want to make it a development?
No, I I don't have an issue with granting something, but it seems like that this this has been a problem. This property has been a big problem.
It was a moonscape before.
I know, but it's. Saying to you, it's been a big problem. It's been a big problem. It's a, and you can understand the neighbors dealing with it over and over and over again. I mean, if we lived in the neighborhood, we would be probably freaking having a heart attack there.
I understand, but I I would also look at it as a neighbor and say, well.
It's going to bring a problem.
They're also, they've also gotten roughly, let's say halfway done. And once it is complete and they put four more houses there, the value of my house now goes up.
No, and I understand that, and what I'm saying to you is, like, if if you start construction or start doing construction at seven, six-thirty in the morning.
No, no, no one's saying that, but.
Summer times, it happens, and it it happens, and, you know, and I'm saying that, and believe me, because I live in that neighborhood, and you can hear it. So it's not like you don't hear it. It goes on. What I'm saying to you is, like, we also have to take into consideration, and I mean, I don't mind giving an extension, but I don't know eighteen months. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I I would be okay with doing maybe.
A year?
Something a little slower. Just so they can come back in front of us again, we can get another.
But can they get another extension after the eighteen months?
Yeah.
We could do six months. We could do, we could do whatever we want.
Right.
We can't go more than, but we can lessen it. Again, just for them to come back, give us another status update, let us know if they're on track. It gives the residents another opportunity to potentially present.
Right.
Any public letters and stuff if they.
Maybe it gives them a nudge.
Things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I I don't, you know, I want to finish it, and I think that they, hopefully, that they're going to put houses there, but I don't, we don't know that, because basically we didn't.
Regardless of the development, it's better than it was.
Right.
It was terrible.
I mean, they could still, they could still sell the property.
As I'm saying, it's.
Exactly. They could sell it. They don't have the necessary.
If they.
A lot of things could happen.
If they get it to where they need to be, and who cares if they build the four houses, as long as somebody can.
Marketable.
That's, that's the, that's the. That's what we, that's what the plan was, what the plan was.
Right, but they're obviously doing, but they're obviously doing something because they've gotten to the halfway point of the property. I mean, they're obviously doing something.
And that's why we don't, and we, I feel like we get into this debate all the time about, you know, when we get an excavation and fill permit, wanting to know what's going to happen after, but it doesn't really matter because it's all make believe. I mean, they could say they're they're going to do that, but again, they can sell the property. There's no way to lock them into after the excavation and they'll.
Right.
Building anything until that happens, so.
No, just that we have to.
If you want, I mean, they're more than willing to put in a zone change.
Yeah, no, it's, it sounds like.
But I don't think that.
You think that actually gives you more of a security that it is going to be developed in the residential? I know that they're willing to do that.
No, yeah, I, well, yeah, but I think that the reason why we didn't do that last time was we discussed it, was that they couldn't do what they're doing now to get the material out of there. They had to leave it where, right? Wasn't there something about that?
If you want to consider a twelve-month extension, and then have them come back and make sure they're moving along. Yeah, that sounds everyone.
I mean, I'm fine either way. I'm fine with the twelve, the eighteen. I don't see any particular reason or, you know, add.
Well, a- after the eighteen, oh, no, we could.
You can give up to two years.
Okay.
Up to two years.
So you give them twelve now, and if they need the other six, they could come back to us and ask for it.
At least at that point, we would see that. Are they actually going to be able to finish it in twelve months?
Correct.
Yeah. What happens after the two years?
I have to look. They, I think they might be able to get more than that.
That's what I'm saying, like, it it doesn't seem like it's going to end.
I think it might be up to ten years total, to be honest.
All right, so what do you want them to do? You want them to stop working on it and leave it the way it is?
I don't know.
It's a double-edged sword. I get it.
What are they doing with that? They're using it for profit or for other projects.
It's building roads and whatever. Pepper Street.
Which is a. It's a freaking.
Of course, it, of course, it's a quarry, because they have to get it to a certain point where you got to. There's quarrying activities taking place. Absolutely. To. Has to. You don't move rock like that and not not being quarrying activities. It's it's just impossible. We want them there with a little hammer and a chisel. All right.
The point is, the point, the point is that they stop once they get to the number of how much information, or how much.
They don't just keep going deeper and deeper and deeper.
That's the key. The key is not how long are they going to take to do it? It's.
Well, to the neighbors, that matters.
Of cour- of course. Well, again, I think it also matters that something happens on the site. Yeah, the point to prevent it being an illegal operating quarry is they.
They're the only ones that have actually done so. That's the problem, because then we run into the problems we've had in the past, so the key is making it more difficult.
It's also the time.
Timing is, you know, you I mean, have you ever worked on a project where maybe you need more time? It it does happen.
Yeah, but not ten years.
Yeah, well, they're not asking for ten years. We're not, it's potential, but they still have to.
It's ten years.
Yes. They still have to come in front of us again, and that's what we're lowering it, and maybe, you know.
Well, I don't get a vote, but I'll I'll go on the record that it'll say that they're going to be asking for more time, and then they're going to ask for more time again.
Yeah.
That's just why.
Well, they are moving along, and that we know from the survey. We watched Cambridge Drive the same way, and they moved along, and I think they're finished now. No, but they're getting close, yes?
Coming in for an amendment.
Close, Mike.
Let's not talk about another.
Coming in for an amendment.
That's a whole different part.
Never mind. So what do you say?
Right here.
Do a vote.
Uh, twelve months? How are we leaning?
Uh, twelve.
Uh, let's do twelve.
Twelve, okay. I don't know if we have to vote on this. Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Sounds like the consensus is, all right, we'll do a, we'll all call votes, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Miami, yes.
Westland, yes.
For twelve-month extension.
And make sure that there's no material brought onto that property.
I will.
I'm just telling you right now.
I'm so sorry. Did we have a second?
No.
We need a second, nothing, no.
I don't think we have a motion.
Second, I think we did start, no, it was.
I think the motion was to approve a twelve-month extension.
Yeah.
I made the motion.
And.
O'Reilly?
I think you can make.
Yeah, I can. There was no second.
He can, yeah.
I'll second it if you're.
By Miami, and then the vote again.
Go do the vote. Go do the vote.
Condon, yes.
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 Unanimous, okay? O'Reilly, motion. Miami, second.
Someone's raising their hand.
Multiple.
Uh. Somebody's raising their hand.
It's not.
It's not.
Not public.
Is that this commission's discretion?
Is that who submitted the letter?
Too late now, unfortunately.
No, the reason he asked for it to be, he was unable to attend the thing.
All right, you got twelve months. Tell them to get their hammers and chisels out. Let's get going.
Respondents.
None at the moment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to report, chairman's report.
I'm bad.
I just wanted to ask, Catherine, is there any protective measure in place for stone walls?
The commission has, in the subdivision, I believe it's the subdivision regulations, it says to preserve as much of the stone walls as possible. But they're not, and and they do have archaeological value, absolutely, for sure. Because they designated old farmlands and properties and things of that nature, so there's definitely value to that. But there's nothing saying you have to, but it's strongly encouraged when you can to save stone walls.
Was, is there something in the regulations that says they can relocate the stone walls, but they?
Yeah, I think it's the subdivision regulations that talk about it.
Yeah.
Like them to relocate.
Yeah, like if you're gonna, you know, if you're going to remove it, you have to still keep it on the property, you just move it somewhere else.
Didn't that happen with the, um, at Wolf Park with the fields?
Maybe Wolf Park, I want some, maybe.
Get it at Panera, too.
It has to be Cutler's Farm by Bug Hill. I had to talk about that, because they're looking at, you had to do like a something, it was like orange difference or something.
Starbucks sign?
No, it's fine, no.
So there's similar to the one at Capital. Is it Capital?
But it's grandfathered in.
I'm happy to talk about it, but let's go back to the stone walls just because we have it. So in recognizing the historic and natural value of field constructed stone walls common in and around the town of Monroe, all stone walls on a subdivision shite shall be mapped for the requirements. Wherever feasible, stone wall shall be preserved as found on site or shall be relocated on site. Wherever practical, existing or new lot lines shall be made to follow stone walls, provided they generally conform to the provisions of Section one-one-three-zero-four of these regulations. So it's where feasible and where possible.
If they do map one, map one out and it's in the way, and have to remove it, we can say.
You can ask them to relocate it, but they're not required to do. Uh, Starbucks sign.
Yeah.
The lollipop sign is what we refer to as pole-mounted signs. So there's two parts of the requirements. There's the actual height of the total sign, so the pole and the sign, and then the total square footage of the actual sign. And the regulations used to be fifteen feet was the total height, but in nineteen eighty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission changed it to twenty feet. So in nineteen eighty-five, we have been permitting twenty-foot pole-mounted signs.
Monument sign.
Since then. I was asked to do a deep dive on this. I. These regs. Capital Spirits is a recent one. It's not like one from twenty years ago, but Capital Spirits is approximately a twenty-foot sign. The difference between the Capital Spirit sign and the Starbucks sign is the Capital Spirit sign, the road is here, the parking lot is here, the the sign is there. Starbucks, the road is here, the sidewalk is here, the parking lot for Starbucks is here, and then the sign goes up from there. So it's, it feels taller than what it is, because even though it's in compliance with the regulations, it is the full twenty feet. But even though it is within that twenty-foot compliance of the regulations, the finished grade is much higher than where people are perceiving when they're driving down the road. So it feels a little higher than what it is, but it is permitted. I mean, they made the total square footage for the signs. They are underneath the right at the max, but they are at the height. So it is permitted for our regulations. If you would like to look at the sign, let me know.
Yeah, the sign looks great.
I saw it.
It looks all right.
I I don't think it feels as egregious as some people do. I actually think it for a commercial corridor, it feels okay to play.
And then the, uh, the Capital Spirits one just replaced an existing lollipop sign that was there, right?
Yeah, but just because you, I I mean.
I don't know if they did a new location. I think they just changed the content of the top.
Of what the top sign was.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, if they took down the sign, like, let's say the sign was thirty feet tall, if they took down it, we would have made them comply with the twenty feet, but I I mean, they, you have twenty, you have twenty feet.
So does the reg say from the, it's twenty feet from the finished grade? It's not from the street?
No, the only time I have seen in zoning regulations to account for things like that is like they'll, they'll say like, a building height is, um, however many feet, thirty-five feet from finished grade within six feet of, you know, the perimeter of the building, so you have to take the average of like what it is, so that you can't, you know, do this and go down. Our sign regulations don't say that, but that's a really unique condition. That's not the norm. The norm is that the finished grade at the parking lot is pretty similar to what's around it. And then where do you, where do you end that? So what if you do have, yeah, you'd have to say within.
Kind of site, I guess.
And it's actually, you know, it's not right at the, where the slope comes down. There is actually a little bit of shelf, and then it goes down. But again, where you're perceiving it from the road, the road sits much lower. Much as in like five feet.
There's a much taller pine tree there beforehand, too, so.
Any other questions? Subcommittee meeting?
Um, we can schedule one for May.
The only reason why I ask is I need somebody that wants to come in and speak at it.
Yeah, come along. Um, so our meetings are May first and May fifteenth would be the two planning and zoning meetings. So we would be looking at Monday, May fifth, or Monday, May nineteenth, if we wanted to do it on the off.
We can't do it on Cinco de Mayo, can we?
Oh, that's.
Not a federal holiday.
My life's a little different these days. I'm not celebrating Cinco de Mayo, okay?
It's not a thing anymore.
Not a thing anymore.
It's on Monday.
It's not for me either, so.
I do the fifth.
It's fine.
Yeah, it's all involved.
Yeah, I'm in.
Fifth is good.
Yeah. We're going to make Cinco de Mayo great again.
So May fifth?
Sure. What time do you want? I know.
Five thirty?
Two different times.
You going to bring the margaritas?
Dude, I make an awesome.
Five thirty's good.
I'll bring pizza. And we'll roll, we'll sheep them into toppings.
Okay.
Five thirty, May fifth.
Anything else from a staff point of view, Catherine?
No.
Chair Luntan, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and second?
Second.
Adjourn, nine P M. Thank you, everyone.